All right, good evening to everyone. Called a November 5th, Melbourne and council meeting to order. I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda that we have presented to us.
I'll move to approve the agenda presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, communications. Does anybody that would like to address the council? Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. Approval of council minutes October 15, 2018. Approval of liquor license for Gary's Foods.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, ordinance 10-1, 2018A. Amending chapter 55.21, livestock of the Melbourne Municipal Code.
Nothing new to report.
This is the third and final reading.
Given that, and I feel that we addressed the concerns, I move to approve the ordinance 10-1-2018A. Amending chapter 55.21, livestock of the Melbourne Municipal Code.
I'll second that.
Any comments? No comment, roll call please.
West, yes. Roddabush?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
All right. Next item, resolution 11-5, 2018A. Authorizing the advancement of costs for urban renewal projects and certification of express expenses incurred by the city for payment under Iowa Code section 403.19. Chris?
As I explained, we will have a payment on the $5 million bond issuance that we just did in June of 2019. In order to capture the TIP dollars for that payment, we would have had to do that in December of '17. Obviously, we did not have a debt and could not. So my plan is to borrow internally from the lost funds that we currently have. And then we will capture the TIP, or at least portion of the TIP, actually in the report that you received today. So we'll half December of '18 and half December of '19. This is, without trying to confuse anybody, this is kind of the process that we have to go through in which to recapture those TIP dollars that we weren't able to in 2017. We're using cash that we already have from the local office of sales tax. So it's a roundabout way of getting those TIP dollars specifically for this project.
Any other questions?
I have no questions. So I would take a motion to approve resolution 11-5-2018A, allowing the city to borrow from existing funds and pay back the due TIP revenue.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please.
Weasler?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
I was looking up to get a peripheral question in. But are we, or who, is tracking the receipts? The private receipts? Like, big ones? Because I think Hall Prime was doing three payments, and the first one was December 15th, or something like that, this year. Do we have a spreadsheet? Does there, do we have somebody that is checking those off as they come in? Little of the private, the individual ones? But are you up to that point yet?
So Rory, we both, has been, he's created the spreadsheet, and he and I are actually working together back and forth on identifying who's given what and when. But we've been utilizing his spreadsheet.
Some big ones are going to be coming in?
Yes.
Pretty soon.
Correct.
And I assume that he is making sure that the matching funds process, and there's some deadlines for that, and everything's coming together well?
Not exactly. So as the reports go back to Hall Prime and some of the other organizations, those will be on the city to keep track of. We will also, as we've talked about, audit the CDG account. My plan is sometime after the first of the year, after some of those major donations that come in, and then we will make the request to CDG reevaluate where we're at. And then identify what monies are coming in. And I'll have another spreadsheet for you as we start. So to give you some idea, we did receive the $5 million fund. So that construction budget should have, right now, like $6.2 million. So it hasn't been pressing for us to go ahead and then make the request quite yet.
It comes all at a time. Is co-mingling with CDG going to be an issue with regard to interest?
We won't necessarily co-mingle. And CDG hasn't requested any of the interest anyway. So the large amounts, large sums of money won't be in their account long enough. Don't necessarily worry about the interest that's generated. So again, the large donation, it's my understanding, has been received in Hall Prime and a few others. So what I'm attempting to do is make one large request of CDG, let that sit for a couple of months, and then make another large request. We're not making multiple requests over months' time. We don't necessarily need those dollars.
I was just going to say, that was a question that came up in the last CDG board meeting. Then we clarified with Chris, and I think everybody got it. That's a good way to do it, rather than, you know, small amounts of monies needing to move it in a large lump sum.
Make it less confusing and cumbersome.
The first movement, though, will be a large one, over a million dollars. So if we had any concerns about interest, that would have been that, that particular donation. And we should have that hanging after the first of the year.
Thank you.
Any other? You're good. All right, next item, resolution 11-5-2018B. Certifying the TIP debt incurred in calendar year 2018 for fiscal year 2020 to the Lynn County Auditor.
So the city is certifying $6 million in new debt. That's $5 million in the borrowing itself, or in the $5 million plus interest in that borrowing. So our annual TIP asking for this year is just over $560,000. It does include four current bond payments that we're making, and then, of course, that interfund, half of that interfund that we just did in the very first resolution. Beyond that, we are still at least one year away from our two rebate programs. We'd like to see that kick in maybe next December, but it could be the following December beyond that.
Why does it take so long?
Part of the reason, so they pulled permits this year. It will be an entire year before those four homes would actually come onto the tax rolls in the fall of January. And it would be another year, another December after that, before we could actually have a value to capture. So it takes that long. That was part of the concern when we set those development agreements up and why, how we tried to phase them, and then when they started. So we won't pass an ordinance adopting that, and their time clock for phase one won't start until after we approve all the public improvements in there for city use.
Any other questions?
So are you asking for a motion on both of these resolutions?
No, they'll have to be individual. If you would like, I can just tell you that the next one, 11-5-2018C, that's the annual report that we have to send to the state.
Something we do every year.
Yes.
So if you want to do it back to that. Yeah, they do have to be done individually?
Right.
I'll start the process with the resolution. I'm taking a motion to adopt the resolution 11-5-2018B, certifying to the county auditor that TIP debt incurred for the next calendar year 2018 for fiscal year 2020. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
Then we can move right to resolution 11-5-2018C, unless anybody has any other questions for Chris.
I move to approve resolution 11-5-2018C, approving the annual urban renewal report for fiscal 2018 to the Iowa Department of Urban Development.
I'll second that.
No comments? No comments, roll call please, Sue.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weasler?
Yes.
All right, so we'll let you get caught up there in your writing. All right, next item, 11-5-2018D. Making the award of the construction bid for the building improvements for the Lester Bird Family Community Wellness Center project.
We had nine bidders, which was incredible. We also had a very small margin of difference in the nine bids. It was a good day when your first bid that came in, the first number was six. So, and I explained this in the report to everybody, but I want to make sure everyone understands so they see multiple numbers, and they're going, what are we doing? So the overall project estimate is, that was provided by OPN, and that includes architecture fees, furnishings, all of that stuff was $8.8 million. The city was hoping for a project at $8.6 million. That $8.8 million included $385,000 worth of contingency. So our worst-case scenario was we were going to have to be really close on our contingencies in order to make that $8.6 million number. Of that $8.8 million, top dollar OPN architecture estimate, $7.8 was the building construction estimate. So what we did, in order to reduce, or potentially reduce that amount from $7.8 to closer to $7.6, was create four alternatives. The bids actually came in, the base bid for Garland was $6,854,000. The overall bid was $7,059,000. So we were, you know, a full $700,000 under where we needed to be. Now granted, as I put in my report as well, there's security equipment, there's purchasing and weight equipment. And then later on the agenda, you'll see some additional testing that I would like to do. So total project cost right now is over $7.3 million. But we still have $300,000 plus $385,000 contingency. So almost $700,000 in which to still work within. Or, you know, if there are any potential issues when we start the construction process. We have plenty of space, I feel like, to be able to move this project forward. We're not tight. I do want to say with nine bidders and the proximity of each of the bids that OPN's plans were really well put together. That's usually a reflection of the project that they're specifying. So all in all, like I said, staff was happy. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. You did receive a letter of recommendation from OPN recommending Garland with all four alternatives with a total bid amount of $7,059,000. Now, to reiterate, you're disapproving the bid tonight. You will have one more step after this, and that is to approve the contract, the specific contract with Garland.
And for those who may not know, Garland is an organization that is currently doing the Cedar, or the Cedar House, the Melbourne School District project as well.
And real quick, while we're on the subject, I have been communicating with Greg with the school district. We will have a joint public meeting to talk about staging, entrances and exits, how all of this is going to work between the two entities. It does benefit both entities, like the same general contractor has this project. Assuming that a majority of the subcontractors will be the same as well, we should have less trailers, less superintendents to go back and forth. So all in all, I think for both entities, it will be a benefit.
I think it would have benefited the school if they would have waited for us to do it. I'm glad they did first. I know, that's the reason. I think they would have got a better deal.
You know, and we discussed that a little bit too. They would have probably gotten a little bit better bid, but I don't know that they would have gotten much better because the issue with the school is there's three sites in it. So their bid is slightly more complicated. And you can tell that by, I think they were expecting seven and got five. So we were, we had 11 firms take plans, 11 general contracting firms take plans, as far away as Wisconsin. I did not expect nine, I was hoping for seven. But that, yeah, that was a good day.
Where is Garland based?
Bell Plain originally.
They have a media presence in Cedar House.
Yeah, I know, but I see them.
And they were actually late to the table. They did not, they chose to bid it after they got the schools. They had originally not taken on plans, so. Sure, they're like, can we do both? Can we do both? Like I said, they can shift their guys back and forth, and it works out well. Yeah, and if you look at the difference between their bid and the next highest would have been Tricon, there's only about $70,000 separating the two, which, if you look at job superintendents and foremen, that might be your $70,000. So it was, I mean, it was really tight. Extremely, extremely close.
For a project this scope and this volume in one vocation, basically, we should be getting, you know, the best superintendent, the best foreman, and so on. I mean, we should get their A-team because there's a lot of people watching how they do this project, so.
Yeah, the nice part for us is we can discuss back and forth a lot and think about it as well, yeah.
And I think it will be interesting though, because traffic is already a major, major hurdle, and now this is just going to add to that times 10, so.
Yeah, the expectation is you will see some temporary curb cuts made in locations for their parking. I don't obviously want to speak to the school until they make an announcement on how that. But we've taken aerial photographs and identified areas on both the sites where they could potentially try and stage. And again, the more subs that are, or subcontractors that are being used at both sites, the better because, again, we will have one trailer versus two trailers, you know, and that will be a benefit.
Nothing we can't work through with a little communication and patience, for sure. Does anybody else have any other questions for Chris? Or is it entertaining motion?
Well, before we go on, I just wanted, I came in here, there's three of us, I mean, it requires three to pass this, to go on. And I had talked to Chris earlier. I just wanted to make sure we address with a resolution our maintenance and operation costs for this facility. I mean, we set a precedence with the K9 unit. And I was, when I voted for that, I thought, well, any new, it looks like we're setting a precedence for any new project, any new thing we create, it should have its own funding source so we're not sapping something else. And based on this facility here, I mean, it's got, it's got lost money. And according, we're only, right now, we're about $25,000 we're going to, of the 125,000 we're putting towards the payment process. The rest is going to be TIP. And so that'll leave 100 grand a year for whatever we choose to use it for. If we want to pay more on it, we want to put it away into a fund that will upgrade the facilities, equipment, in a certain amount of time. Then you got the membership fees, you got the rental of the facility, and you got donations. So that's a huge amount of sources there for this facility. And I think the resolution sustains that that's all it can come from. Because we shouldn't be sapping general fund money just in, if this, I mean, if the city is so into this, like everybody on this council says it is, it shouldn't be a problem with that kind of backup. 100 grand, I mean, it shouldn't be a problem.
I understand what you're saying, Eric. But Chris, haven't we already agreed that your general funds are available for this?
Well, so, two things when it comes to this. And I will state openly that I didn't agree with the comment or the inclusion of the resolution on the K9. And I also said that it probably would be, would be upheld to hold, try and hold a future council to that because it's unlikely that that could ever happen. So as, I agree, it was kind of a dangerous precedent to start before. I don't necessarily believe that you can hold a future council to eliminating where they use future funds from, especially given the different dynamics that could occur. So I understand what you're saying. I didn't necessarily agree with that, that position with the K9 because, again, if we have to use those funds in the future, that'll be up to the council that's seated at the time whether or not they want to use those funds. The second thing is, what makes it difficult to add anything in a resolution right now is the fact that we sold $5 million in general obligation debt. So even though we're paying those bonds with TIP obligations, according to the document that you signed, or the bond documents that we signed, we are backing them if all else fails with debt service.
Right.
So if that is, I mean, if that's truly a condition, I would suggest maybe tabling this until the next meeting. There isn't any rush. I think there's 30, these bids are good for at least 30 days. I just can't sit here and honestly tell you that even if you were to put that in a resolution, it would hold any water, you know, past the next sitting council. I will tell you that over the last two years, the council has presented staff with a number of questions. And one of them was to have a backup plan should revenues fall short. And that was the reasoning for pursuing TIP, to pay back the building plans and leaving the lost funds, or majority of the lost funds, as a funding mechanism that you could set aside. I'll use an example, the gym floors, the hard courts can be depreciated over a period of time because they will have to be replaced at some point. So my suggestion with that additional funding is that we would set up depreciation accounts. We would also put away, if in fact, at some point, the phase for the pool was decided in the report with the future council, you know, it's shown on there they could potentially use those. We have those dollars for the next 17 years. That really was, you know, the operation cost is always the part that's going to keep staff awake. And I will put a lot of pressure on Matt to make sure that revenues are situated in such a manner that this building at least break even. And that's, that's kind of the goal I've established for him. But I will not sit here and guarantee that to anyone. And there's, as I said, there's still a risk, obviously, that we could have some losses moving forward. The whole point for trying to keep as much of that sales tax around is in case we do have those losses. I'm really hoping that we'll be able to have a lot of depreciation accounts with it. But I don't want to sell an expectation that I know that I can't deliver on. I also would thoroughly love to move away from trying to include those items in votes, knowing full well that it really wouldn't bind a future council.
Okay.
So.
So ultimately, it's up to you three in terms of, you know.
But counsel person Roddabush is correct. It is a resolution, and ordinance is a resolution. And I think spending funds over $25,000 would require all three of you to vote in favor tonight. So if there is any uncomfort, we'll have a full council at the next meeting.
Full, full, yeah.
As much as I would like to get this moved and resolved, I recognize some sensitivity here. I recognize, as Chris mentioned, I've been trying to work with the timing a little bit. And quite frankly, for 19 years, this community has cautiously looked at this project and looked at, and different committee members have looked at this. I'm not sure in another couple of weeks it's going to pull this off any further here. So sensing, you know, your point, Eric, I'm going to make a motion to table it, basically. So that's where that's at.
I'll second it. I don't know if it's good.
Okay.
We've got precedent to show that we don't rush anything quickly on this, on this project.
All right, so resolution 11-5-2018B has been tabled and we will address at the November 19 council meeting at that time. Any other comments or anything?
Do we have any numbers? Like I said, I haven't seen anything of like estimates of labor, I mean, salaries.
What's your, the operation?
You know, operation costs made. Have we got?
The estimated operation costs were in the grant application that we had, and we're estimating right about $300,000, based upon some of the facilities.
$300,000 a year, yes. And then what was the worst case supposedly with, with like membership fees or rental fees and?
Memberships alone, and I cringe kind of putting this number out here because obviously the council would have the final say on what we do. But the goal staff will bring back to you is to make sure that enough people become members because it's part of its volume, and then part of it's getting the price right at the beginning. I can tell you the two other facilities that we went to had started their family memberships at under $500, and had they just had 100 more dollars per family membership based upon the numbers that they had, they would be breaking even. Our goal was somewhere between $6 and $650 per family. You know.
A little beefy.
To put it in perspective, a Y membership is closer to 800 per other family per year. So it would be less than a number of places or facilities. The other thing that I would say, and will continue to bring to you as this project goes forward, is every, every change that we've made, every addition to the square footage, has been there to add a potential program or a potential revenue stream, reduce the cost of our staffing. It's designed so that one individual can staff it at low-volume times using cameras at the front desk. Of course, the geothermal system, we do have room to talk about potential solar on the roof now that we've got a gap between beds. So we feel fairly confident that we'll be able to hit those numbers. But we'll have a senior rate, we'll have a husband-wife rate, we'll have a daily individual pass, a monthly individual pass, you know. So there will be a series of rates, and depending on the combination, we know where we have to be. I do feel fairly confident in Matt and Matt's ability to program in this community. He's already kind of shown a precedence for that. So I do believe that he'll be able to sell.
Because based off of that, you're looking, try, let's say $600, you're looking at 500 families, if it's just families, which is quite a few.
It is. And, you know, again, that's if we use only revenue from memberships. And from a revenue standpoint, the rental of the facility becomes somewhat difficult to predict. And kind of hence the reason, going back to that sales tax, is there is some question out there, and there are some things that we don't know. I can tell you that right now, the plan is that it will be Matt and one other full-time employee, and then other part-time employees. We expect to have a cleaning contract for the facility itself. And we'll have maintenance contracts on certain items as they're under warranty. So there'll be some expense there. The geothermal system, if we're able to look at the solar, should help immensely. All the lighting in there is LED. So everything that we could do as a staff to cut that potential loss has been done. And again, anything that comes forward to you in a change order will be done for that very reason too. Either reducing overall costs or somehow making it more conducive for staff to run the facility. When we started this, though, even when we wrote the grant, we've got more square footage. more square footage. The turf room is a game changer, I think. The rock wall, this allows us to buy a little bit more equipment to, for the purpose, one of the, you know, just as an example, because it's starting to get cold outside, we've talked about having, you know, in the middle of snow days on, in the turf room, having inflatables and just letting, having a day where kids can just come and pretend like it's summer. That's all going to fall back on Matt shelters, why we wanted to bring Heather on board and get Matt working on that, you know, ASAP. I've been cautious about putting too much out there, having him submit too much stuff to you until I know the building's moving forward. So I can tell you after the vote on the 19th, if it moves forward, you start to see a series of this information coming back. But Wakan is the facility that we tried to emulate in this process. The construction's different. I feel like our construction will actually be better. We have all LEDs, they do not. It's a steel building with a little insulation. Ours is not. Natural lighting, they do not have. So there are some things where I think some improvements that we made without changing the, the amount of square footage, really. And again, I, I still reiterate, and I know some people want to hear this, but not having the pool is part of this project makes a huge difference in operations.
Yeah. Like I said, when this, when this started, when I got in council five years ago, you know, I wasn't warm to this. And, and then we got this, we got this all going. We get, we got the donations going, which I wanted to get done. I wanted to see some skin again. So I don't have a problem with the facility. I just don't want the facility to be a burden to other programs. That's my only problem. I'm all for this. I'll vote for it. But I just, I just got that feeling from some of these other facilities that just got me worried that it's got a potential to, to take some money away from some.
Don't make a guy.
I'm slipping at night, but.
Question from the floor, please.
For you guys. Sir, I think the real challenge is we've done years three and four, you know, shining this word of all after year one and two. Sir, name and address, please.
Oh, Jeff Martin. I live on 111 to Avenue North.
Thank you.
On, on the sledding, on Presley Street. My question, Chris, is you're, you're looking at 500 families?
As an example.
As an example. Now, what, what is the expectation of the number of families you'd get?
The expectation might actually be slightly higher because we're not charging a premium to any resident of Solon, Lisbon, or the surrounding communities, meaning they're not paying enough charge to be members as well. That will be something that Matt will have to monitor. But again, it's volume when it comes to a facility like this.
How many, how many families are living in the area that you consider a possible or probable?
Going back to the study, and I don't want to overestimate the amount of potential users, and I didn't break it down to family, but I want to say that the previous study looked at a ring of about 13,000 by drawing in Solon, Mount Vernon, parts of Marion, going north from a population. And then it had another outer ring, but then you start bringing competition with the Y and other facilities. But that facility in itself had different, different interworkings, I should say. So it did not have a true common site that can be used for weddings, for instance. So the one, one 5,000 square foot portion of this building can actually be closed off and used as a wedding facility. The two comparisons that it used were Waverly and North Liberty, both of which have a rather extensive pool operation and it was difficult to.
So further varus population of those places.
Correct. But again, bringing a pool into the mix actually dramatically changes your amount of expenses and expenses. So we will be marketing to Lisbon, Solon, Mechanicsville, portions of Marion, portions of Cedar Rapids. Matt has already contacted the Cedar Rapids Boys and Girls Club. We made contact with certain representatives in Cedar Rapids as well about potentially bringing families and kids over to use the facility as well. So I do believe that marketing to a lot of the daycares in and around similar to the pools will be another item. We haven't mentioned it, but you know, I'd be at a loss to say if you didn't talk about the local, excuse me, sports teams. So club sports, athletics. When you say 500 family, that's, that would be the number that we needed to be, to get to the expected expenses. But that doesn't include potential rental of the facility for all of those events. So if you look at the schools' facilities calendar, they're booked up past nine o'clock.
Yeah.
So I think we will get some of that.
That impacts the, the cost of the school.
Not necessarily because they don't, or most of it, they don't charge.
Why would they run it from this project that they did at Crete School?
The facility differences.
And based on the hours that are more appealing for them for practice times.
Okay.
And, and don't get me wrong, the, the goal with this is, like I said, to charge enough to cover the expenses, but not charge to the point where nobody's going to use it. And there are facilities, like I said, that do charge too little and their facilities are charged too much. And it's all about where you set that dollar amount at the very beginning and what people get used to. That makes all the difference in the world. The two facilities that we, that we went to and, and they charged too little, you know, both of the directors that we talked to were like, oh, if they just would have charged a hundred dollars more per family, we wouldn't have any issues. Now, they each have unique aspects to their facilities that allow them to recapture those dollars. But, you know, we, we have to start having a conversation about who will allow to cater the facility, what they'll be allowed to do. Right? So, I mean, there's a lot more that will go into the entire facility planning. And, and again, the whole reason behind giving Matt kind of this entire year to put that into place was imperative for us.
There might be parts and program ideas that he can do there that he can't currently, currently do now that would allow you to just.
Yeah, there are definitely programs.
I, I think quite honestly, we're going to have a lot of scheduling issues, which will be good, but there's going to be a lot of conflicts.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of pressure. The location right next to the school also adds to the intrigue. We don't have a daycare, however, and I've made this comment before, you know, for me, for instance, I, of us, I have a great son. I would love nothing more than to send him to a facility like this where I know where he's at. He's kind of in that bubble of he doesn't get a babysitter, but.
The other seventh grade boys.
Yeah. They all kind of hang out. So.
Well, when I was on seventh grade, I was definitely.
So there, there's, there's a lot more that will go into this and we'll keep refining this. And, and again, this is based upon other facilities. These are the types of numbers that we're talking about. That, that can definitely change over the course of the year and we make, as we make adjustments. Ultimately, you will be responsible for setting those numbers. We'll be making recommendations to you. But I think, like I said, if it's run properly, it should at least break even. The facility in Wakan, we did go and visit, it actually made enough to cover additional expenses, additional staff expenses. So wasn't a big profit. I think it's like $4,000 to $6,000 a year, but they were pulling in enough funding to make that.
Good. Any other questions, sir?
No, that's all right.
Thank you very much.
Don't even, don't even, one more. Does anybody know how many people can be in this facility at one time?
I'm sure like cone.
My fire cone.
Yeah. So each section of it is, is rated.
Okay.
So each, each room basically has its own occupancy. The, the larger room can actually fluctuate depending on the type of event that's actually there. So you could hold a presidential meeting there. The issue that you've run into, and we've had this conversation, is by code, it's rated for mechanical air units. It's only rated for so much. So if you have a lot of people in there for a short period of time, it will start probably getting warm. But.
So are we talking 300 people?
I, I would have to get the number.
I mean, if you get, let's, let's say there's five, 600 families. I mean, how many people can get to it and not have a scheduling problem? Like, oh man, I can't get in today because all the machines are being used and I can't run all the, because it's just so packed.
Matt's, Matt will have a challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think to that point, there will be, you know, that's the, the risk you always run because you can lose membership that way. But that's why I think the bids and the facility that we have are completely different than when we started. So when we were at six and a half million dollar facility, 24,000 square feet, that was definitely a, a concern. Now that we have, between all of the rooms, we have almost 72,000 square feet. So is it going to get crowded, especially in the first year? I would imagine yes. The nice part about it is the turf room is also how, home to the batting cages and some other things. So we're able to isolate some of these rooms. Again, you know, the walking track's only going to be able to have so many and people are going to have to adjust. We did, in talking to the New Hampton Chickasaw County Facility, you know, made the decision that as an adult, you can have 24 seven access because it was imperative to that facility to stay open. That's what allowed some of the working adults to come in at 10 o'clock in the morning, 10, 10 o'clock at night or five o'clock in the morning when there wasn't a lot of people in there. Kids, on the other hand, well, their, their key file will stop work from there probably at 10 o'clock.
If you work, working off shift, second and third shift, I mean, that's your, you know, certainly opportunity.
So that was one of the other items. But again, the building is zoned off. We don't have to have anybody house there. The security equipment that we're talking about getting is similar to what we have here at City Hall. The police department will be able to monitor via their computers and the, and the vehicles. So again, from an efficiency standpoint, we tried to take everything we could from all these other facilities. And again, I will be the last person to sit here and guarantee that this thing will break even.
It's like any new product or service you're launching.
Correct.
You do your research, you do your best, you do due diligence, you go out with it and you look at the data. It's going to be super important to survey the people to find out what's working and what's not, and you adjust to it. And I'm confident, you know, that you guys are doing the work ahead of time and that Matt is going to be on that. You're, you're a good challenge.
Yeah.
But, you know, there aren't guarantees and you just have to be able to adjust if you, you've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, I, I told Matt, I said, if somebody's more cognitive than this community.
If it was easy, everybody had one.
Right.
Yeah.
You, you said 17 years now. In seven years, there'll be a vote.
Cedar Rapids will have a vote. Again, that was the other part of going to.
So it's not guaranteed after seven years that we will have 10 more years. It's likely, but not guaranteed.
We will have, we will have.
We're going to look so left.
We can see a reduction, which was the other portion too. Nothing ties us specifically into using $25,000 a year to, to make a payment, but that's kind of what we earmarked. But again, trying to, to look out into the future and predict as many of these as I can, I'm, I feel like staff has brought you a facility that has answered as many questions as we could.
Twenty-five thousand, I mean, that's only, like I said, it's only 25,125. So you're putting away 100 grand every, every year for depreciations and all this other stuff? That seems like an awful lot of.
Well, but if, if, my hope is if it's breaking even, you have the ability to use that 100 grand to make, to raise the tip. Absolutely.
Right.
There's nothing that says you can't do that. I just, from the start, wanted everybody to be on their, here's how we're going to initially start this. And if this thing works better than even my wildest expectations, you can do whatever.
So the idea is possibly use some of that 100,000 to make up some.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That's, that's really what I wanted to hear there. I just didn't want that 125,000 to be committed to some, to something else. And all of a sudden, oh geez, we fell short this year.
No, now, I will say this, that staff has zero control over how those funds are used. I mean, ultimately, the council, whoever is seated at the time, can do what they want on a yearly basis. But the impression is that, yes, I will honestly sit here and smile on their face if we have that, that problem.
Yep. All right. Good discussion, good discussion. Anything?
When I moved to Mount Vernon, I wasn't thinking about or looking at how many ballpills there are, or does it have a dog park, or does it have walking trail system or an indoor fitness facility. But I think people that are looking to move into Mount Vernon in the future are looking at those things. But they weren't even on my radar at that time. But now, that's a, almost an amenity that they expect. It's like water sewer.
It's because you're being compared to others.
Oh yeah, that they're in the internet speed, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
Cell phone service, we can definitely improve on. All right.
Amen to that.
Anything else? All right.
If we can put a tower on top of the facility and get some rental there.
Find that towards it.
All right. Next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Should have copy in front of the council. Any questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the additional claims that's presented for the city.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of pay application number three, 2017 sidewalk improvements. Chris?
This is the retainage. The waiting period has come and gone. And V and K is recommending that we release those dollars.
How are we doing on those residences that did not comply?
So we have identified a majority of them are actually state landlords that have complied. So Heather is making contact with the city attorney on moving forward with those. And then she has completed inspections in the northeast quadrant. However, given the timeframe of this year, the fact that it's already starting to cool off, we will wait until the spring to start working with those residents. Judging based upon the speed of which she was able to complete the northeast quadrant, the next few quadrants will, should be quicker.
Quicker.
Where are we at with nature work?
So those three have, the, the three phases have been identified. It needs to come back to you on agenda for you to choose which location.
Good.
Because I won't be down until the spring.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. Entertained a motion. No other questions?
So I move to approve the pay application number three of the sidewalk program.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of the quote for replacement lift station pump.
Right. So as it, as it states, this is a Bryant station, lift station pump. And the reason it is on the agenda is twofold. One is the amount, obviously. But the second is to re, or overhaul this pump, the cost is expected to be $4,871 in due and sets. The replacement value, should we go that direction, is $5,760. So there's not a significant difference, obviously, between the two. When I asked Alex to give me an estimate on the pump, he believed that the, this pump was put in place in 1999 and then looked at back in 2014. So it is probably seen in today. Most of those pumps are good for about 20 years. And so staff wanted to show you both options, but is recommending the, the replacement. This will come out of sewer funds.
Pretty much an over here. Yeah, for a thousand dollars, you know, would make much sense to, do the repair work needed?
I'll, I'll make motion to approve the purchase of a new system to replace the Bryant lift station pump.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of a proposal for special inspections and material testing services, excuse me, for the Lester Burge Family Community Wellness Center project.
So I know we've talked about the community wellness center a lot tonight, but when I originally started this project, I've had considerable success hiring a construction management firm. management firm, um, to be onsite during the construction process. When it looked like the dollars were going to be fairly tight because it would have probably been close to two hundred thousand dollars to have them onsite, I, I pulled back hoping that, um, we would have some room to have for the discussion. In the meantime, in my conversations with, uh, Roy Weebel and a few others, um, we've kind of talked, talked about a happy medium. So Braun InterTech would do additional testing, they would also be onsite while significant aspects of the building were occurring, concrete quarters, uh, panel, uh, delivery, and would be able to, uh, act as the city's non, uh, they don't have any skin necessarily in the construction process, so they would act on our behalf as kind of a contractor. So again, given the bids where they were at and, and the initial awards, uh, for seventy-five thousand dollars or less than one percent of the total project cost, I can have more peace of mind that the, the building that is being constructed is being constructed as well as can be. So that was the basis behind, um, this proposal. As you tabled the previous one, you can do the same. My expectation is that at the next meeting, that the project will probably move forward. So, um, you can still approve this tonight if the project does, for some reason, not go forward, it would be hell, obviously, to the seventy-five thousand. So, um, you can make a motion tonight to go ahead and, uh, allow the mayor to sign this at the time that the building is, um, so you got some options there depending on what you want to run.
Can I ask a question from both of these?
Yes, please come forward, sir.
My name is Dr. Michael Montgomery, literally twenty-two, tenth avenue southwest. My question is, the, the traffic for the construction, the roads out there, I mean, Palisades Road right now is kind of like right on the gravel road. And if you're going to have construction there, the front of my house, I've been up there twice and asked to have the, the crack that's, that's drilling bigger and bigger and bigger every day, if we can fix it. So the infrastructure and everything around this, do we have any money available to fix this after we go through all this with the trucks and the cranes and, and all the stuff that's going to be needed to, uh, make this facility?
To answer your question, um, both from Palisades heading, uh, to the east and to the west offer, um, different, different problems. Going to the west, it's a seal coat street and my initial estimate, we would do the reconstructing with concrete or it would be a six inch, uh, asphalt street. So it'd be almost like a, a new, a new street construction. The portion of Palisades heading, um, to the east would likely be an overlay of two inches of asphalt, so they're different projects in that distance. But two things, um, to, to not walk around your question is, is money identified yet? No. The local option sales tax that would have been used for street funding at this point has all been allocated until within two years when this project, when the sales tax goes away. So they are tied to bond payments, uh, for previous projects. I will say that projections or dollars coming in from the, the franchise fee is beating what the estimates were, and that would be a funding source for both of those projects. But I would want both of the school project, the city project, and at least phase one or phase two of the, the Stone Brook construction to be under, underway or, you know, almost complete by the time we start putting in new streets in both of those locations. So in the meantime, we will, uh, patch and take care of, the intersection had to be done and had to leave, um, under it right away, but, uh, we'll continue to monitor. But they are on the five-year plan, both Palisades and First, uh, First Street.
The second, uh, part of my thought was, we did, by we, I'm, I'm assuming city, can I say we, that's just no sort of nothing, uh, we did a, a thorough study on the, uh, increase in sewer and water and street funding with the two mutations, because I do know for a fact because somebody has wine to me, I feel doing good, but having problems in certain parts of the city with water now, they're asking us, and all they have to do is pray for rain. So I, this is all, the reason I'm saying this, because this is all tied together with your infrastructure and your, and your growth plan and everything else. So, you know, that we really, you know, we have, if we have some money that we have, you know, we, we really don't have to be true, because if, uh, you get a hiccup and, and, and God helps, you know, the election goes south and, and they start taking everything back, you know, we really, really beat that thing up this time.
Yeah, so I would say that we have, um, you know, the, the one difficult thing for me to show, and I can show it a little bit in the CIP, is we have multiple funding mechanisms for different portions of projects. They don't cross, um, I'll say they don't cross bank accounts, so I can't pull from one fund and put it over to another project fund, uh, very easily. You saw the resolution tonight where we borrowed internally. So there's a, there's some hoops that I have to jump through in order to make that happen. But with that being said, I would say that we have taken steps over the last two years to ensure that we will have funding mechanisms. Now, they're not big, but they are funding mechanisms that are available to complete some of these projects. The prioritization of those projects becomes imperative. So, um, as I've told the council before, as we look at street projects, for instance, doing a full reconstruct on a street that could be, um, completed with a two-inch asphalt overlay, if the full reconstruct's going to gain you five to seven more years, uh, but it's going to take, you know, ten to twelve years' worth of your funding, you may look at the two-inch asphalt, and that's what's going to have to be determined as we move forward. Sewer and water are slightly different animals because they have their own revenue generating funding stream. But, you know, we are doing one point six million dollars worth of upgrades to the, the sewer treatment facility that's being dictated by the state of Iowa. Um, so that's moving forward. We just upgraded the water plant, so we're paying some of that off. As soon as some of those activities get done, then we will start making improvements in other locations. Uh, we are knocking off as many small projects as we can currently. Uh, we haven't spent any franchise fee money because we're trying to gauge how much we're actually going to have on a yearly basis, but you'll see, um, in the next couple of months that we'll start talking about the CIP. When I talk about that, that's kind of the list of all the projects that are kind of hanging out there. But, um, I feel fairly comfortable with the amount of dollars coming in. The hardest part for me, and the thing that I would always say, because I've had people ask me, what about raising taxes? You know, maybe it is time since we haven't raised taxes in Mount Vernon for twenty years to maybe look at that. Well, my answer back to everybody is one penny generates about fifteen hundred dollars. So in the grand scheme of thing, if we're going to deal with a million dollar project, for instance, a hundred thousand dollar payment, do the math, and it's, you know, the sixty cent increase just to get that one project done. So what we were attempting to do, or what my staff is attempting to do, is free up dollars that would be available to do those projects. You know, tax increment financing laws have been tightened, so they now have to be used for economic development purposes. Reason we're looking at doing the community wellness center with it versus some other funding mechanism is because I can use tip dollars there and I don't use other funds, um, that I may have had to tap into previously. So, um.
Tell me where I'm at. I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt, but in my former life, before I retired, I started plants with foreign investors in four different parts of the state, in different, different states, and, uh, money was used as a property, even though they said they had enough. They didn't.
No.
I might overlook something.
No, I, you know, I, I will say this.
Bring it back.
Money is always an issue, and, and to use a perfect example of, you know, we had intended to spend some dollars, uh, on a couple of street projects that completely got thrown out the window as soon as we got the bridge report, uh, going off, over the railroad tracks off of First and the Wega Pass report. So all of those projects that were actually slated to be done five years from now got moved all the way up to the front, and the projects that were slated to be done this year got moved back. So everything changes overnight, seemingly.
Oh, that's it. You got, the one, the big sticks in my mind is, is people that lead up, not the last one, but before I last, when I opened, they dropped off, they forgot their math and dropped off at zero, because a hundred and forty million was a hundred and forty thousand.
We've got, um, I will say there's almost seventeen acres in Stone, Stone Brook Two set aside for water retention, so water runoff. Uh, part of water issues can be attributed if you have a dead-end line, there's a lot of factors that go into it, so I couldn't sit here and say that their individual problem is this. Some of it will be temporary. I know that, uh, some individuals are seeing an uptick in traffic, um, in various areas and, and will during the construction process. But it'll all go back. We will see changes, uh, to the bypass area when it, when it opens. The city is going to have to take over old Highway Thirty. I will negotiate with the DOT as far as the amount of money coming back for that. So there are a lot of projects kind of sitting on the books and, and you'll see that over the course of next four years.
It's the, the environmental impact, like water runoff, science park, the last thing that, is that all in the mix? Because that will shut you down quickly.
Yeah, and I think, like I said, if I, you know, not to speak off topic, but to answer your question, seven acres in Springbend Heights, seventeen acres in Stone Brook. And Stone Brook, the reason it's seventeen acres is it's draining ninety, ninety-plus acres of farm field as well as those sub-ages. So if you look at, at Stone Brook Two versus Stone Brook One, Stone Brook Two actually has more, uh, acres to it than One does, and it'll have far fewer homes. There'll only be ninety, um, ninety to about a hundred and ten homes located on Stone Brook Two versus Stone Brook One. So a lot more green space, a lot more, um, attention is being paid to stormwater. I get those phone calls. I prefer not to get those phone calls, so.
I have a twenty years' warranty to me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So back to item four.
Uh, just a comment. Chris, I think they've got an error in their document on the reference to their available information. Project plans prepared by OPEAN due September seventh, twenty eighteen, and specs. And then they've got geotech evaluation report prepared by Braun dated October twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, doesn't mean twenty eighteen?
No, they did a, um, so Braun InterTech did the, the test borings.
Yeah.
So they're referring to those borings that were actually done in twenty seventeen. We've been working on it for a while.
I thought you were talking about it, okay.
Uh, so no, they, the, we just did one recently in twenty eighteen, but that was for the geothermal well system.
Okay.
That was performed by another, um, testing organization. But Braun InterTech actually did, uh, test holes, test borings, uh, on the site itself.
I remember that one, that was, you know.
At the very start of the project. It seemed like it's been yesterday, but.
All right.
Again, will the council choose in terms of approving the motion?
I'm willing to, to propose that we move forward with this, um, pending approval of the project overall.
Right.
And I'm a strong motion, or I feel either way, but with that intent, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to act on it, um, on the testing, certain, uh, testing now, dependent upon it being approved with.
I'm a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of identifying public hearing date for ordinance vacating and selling north-south sixteen-foot alley right of way adjacent to nine oh six and eight twenty-four Summit Avenue Southwest, Mount Vernon, Iowa. Chris?
This is just a, a public hearing date, it's a small section of alley, um, just off of Summit. For all of you that might be familiar, there's a lot of ground in the, the center of this area that's owned by Cornell and it's surrounded by like a big circle of alley that isn't there. And it has three access points. So this is one of the access points. I can tell you that we would never put an elevator, it's from the elevation difference, but, um, this is a point on the map where this would be, it's right there, this little section here. There's an access here and an access here, and there's this kind of surrounding, creating space. So, um, the property owners have, asked to vacate this area so that they can buy it and use it. But again, this is just setting the public hearing date.
So just need a motion of the date identified, as soon as November nineteenth?
Correct.
I'll make the motion to set a public hearing date for the ordinance vacating and selling the north-south sixteen-foot alley right of way adjacent to nine oh six, the eighteen, I'm sorry, the eight twenty-four Summit Avenue Southwest for November nineteenth.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, demolition ordinance discussion item.
So I handed out the demolition ordinance. Now, this is the last version that I've had. I did attempt to start this this morning. I can tell you that I only got about halfway through to see if my previous notes, changes have been made. They have not all been made. So I suggest, not only because there's only three of you, but you wait until the next meeting and then discuss this further. And I will, I'm trying to recreate, uh, the changes that were specified before.
And I think it's, I think there's value in having this, obviously, this ordinance, but I think what Chris is trying to recreate and what we've talked about with, with other members is probably maybe too much in terms of really what's being asked. I mean, there's a lot of heat to it, so I think we've made a little too far the other way, but, because I hate for Chris or anybody else on his team to spend a lot of time on this in terms of, you know, we've gone, what, almost over a year now, right, without anything? All of a sudden, it was a hot topic and now it's completely backed down to nothing. So there's a lot of other things that, I mean, will probably more value added, but obviously, as Chris mentioned, we could chat a little further at the next meeting when we have full council, but I just think we probably have too much in this ordinance, but obviously, that's, that's more for you guys to truly decide.
A lot of people don't want to be a historic district, and that's, it got to a point where they were trying to make all the areas of the city historic district.
And I think it was too much in terms of you have to jump through all these hoops and get blessing from Amy and C and.
But it's turning apart, staff is not necessarily the introduction of the demolition ordinance, nor having a waiting period, uh, for homes that are over fifty years in order to determine whether or not, um, they're historic structures. The real sticking point in what I was waiting for, um, in return, was this question of how, what were the ramifications of them being identified as historic structures? And I think that's really what it boiled down to is, um, should people still have the right to demolish these homes, uh, even if it is considered historic in nature? And that, that's the question that you as a council are going to have to, to ask yourselves. And there's, and what we, what was discussed before was, if the city is considered to take, you know, the value of this home, then you have to compensate individuals for that. And we had come to some agreement about, uh, requiring them to potentially see or put it on the market for sixty days, I believe. I mean, so there was a lot of kind of moving parts. This isn't an extremely, uh, dense demolition ordinance in comparison to, uh, some, uh, but there are others that are more extensive. So, uh, I just wanted to get it back in front of you. It's been almost, it's been over a year, I think, since we last discussed this, uh, at the work session, so, uh, review it to know that I'm trying to work backwards through some of the changes. I'm not spending a great deal of time on it, I'm just spending enough time to go back and try to make some notes. So at the next meeting, I will just basically give you my handwritten notes on the same version.
I think that would be good if you, because this was all before my time as well, and we also have a new person here probably sitting at the meeting, where you just prepare to give some background with it, was.
Well, I started with Cornell and those two warehouses.
Yeah, I knew it was tied to.
Okay, next item, possible budget, CIP communication.
I hesitate to have too much discussion, it's only a small. I hesitate to have too much discussion, there's only a small amount of you here, and now I know we're most likely going to be a full group at the next meeting. The reason for that is what I've given you is what I did. So this CIP, and I noticed the copy I did, it's like a page upside down, but, you know, in essence, there are 5.5 million dollars worth of requests just identified from commission from the staff for this fiscal year, this going, next fiscal year that we're budgeting for. There's no way we're going to be able to do 5.5 million dollars in the projects. We do have, and this is skewed a little bit because of the UV disinfection at the wastewater plant and in the community wellness center, but we have $10 million, $10.6 million worth of projects that will be under construction this year and those projects already done. We did already through this fiscal year so far, 19 completes, over half a million dollars worth of projects to date. So I can tell you that Matt was extremely excited about franchise fee, as you can tell him, Parks and Trains has the absolute most numbers of projects. I will be shifting these over the course of the next five years. What I ask my staff to do is, not only provide me the projects, but also rate them on importance. So what I will likely do, for instance, with Parks and Trains, is take those projects that were listed at five and shift them out three or four years, and try to get to a more comfortable number for projects. But what I do believe it does, you know, and it's been brought up tonight on several occasions, is just show you that this list continues to grow every year that I've been here, so we keep, you know, as we kick things down the line, it's not, they're not going to disappear, we're just gonna move from one year to the next. So, and as I said earlier, sales tax dollars are, right now, being projections that were provided by ALINE, which is a good thing. It does mean that we'll be able to do slightly larger projects. Local option sales tax, as I said, is spent or is being earmarked, so there is no, I'm at 55% of set aside from streets and sidewalks, it isn't, there aren't dollar amounts that we're gonna be able to do and pull from. So, and I also pointed out, you know, again, for the comments that I've heard as far as potential tax increases, 20 years is a long time to go without a tax increase, and I completely recognize that. However, when one penny generates 50,000 dollars, it's not a default by any means. So some of the new properties coming on will go to a best service that might change, you know, decision a little bit in the future, but we just, I think, as a city, have to do an extremely good job about prioritizing what types of projects we do. And again, if we can get away with doing a seal coat, buying seven more years on a street versus doing a two-inch asphalt overlay on that street, or doing an asphalt overlay on a street that we originally stated for a full reconstruction, those are the types of decisions that you're gonna have to make here over the course of the next five years.
And just to remind everybody that the 55% of that from loss, which is like 275,000 dollars, I believe, where is that allocated again? So is it like 125 to the roundabouts, and then the rest to the third and fifth?
It's, the bond payments that go, that are associated with that portion of the loss, three dollars is closer, about 320,000, 315,000. Hundred thousand or just over 100,000 goes to the roundabouts, and the rest actually goes to the bond issues, and that was completed in 2014, so that's third.
Third, fifth.
We're going to use it on the bridge, we're gonna use it on the Wagon Pass, we're using it on the lights down here at Fifth. So it's kind of been spread all over.
So that's part of them?
Okay.
Of the bond.
Yep. And that's, you know, that's the dangerous part of doing large projects, you know, the million dollar projects where you're gonna ever use, you know, a 10-year note, you know, against it, you're just locking up dollars that can't be used later on. So I do believe, and would argue this, that the introduction of franchise fees was a major turning point for us as far as planning for those dollars, because the two projects that tend to have the hardest time finding dollars for are streets and parks. That's what I believe is where I would imagine.
Anything else on this? Anybody else have a question? All right, moving on to reports, anything from council committee, and everything I had discovered we've already covered. Any else from anybody? Does that feel like you got something?
Well, I was just gonna say, in regard to the CDG, I don't know, but I don't think I mentioned it last time, that Mount Vernon is going to be a host of a Main Street group that's gonna come in in May. It's going to involve 90 people from Main Street, Black City, Main Street community, so it's gonna be a good opportunity to showcase.
And then there's some great news with Beeju as well.
Yeah.
They were awarded 75,000 dollars.
So for possibly, thinking about two...
So we're looking at expanding and adding those.
That'll be awesome, Chris.
In a world where most of them are going the other direction, they are doing one.
Yeah, they're doing very well, yeah, so it'd be awesome.
Anything else, otherwise, Chris?
Just real quick, obviously, we will be closed on Veterans Day. There is a, there was an email that went out about a small service that's like referred to the cemetery, so if there's anybody that's available to go there. This week will be somewhat tricky for me. I will be out of the office tomorrow after 3:15. Wednesday, I will be in the office, except I am going to go support the volleyball team at noon, so I will be in the morning and back in the afternoon. And then I will be here with a delegation from Decorah on Thursday until noon, and then I will be out for the rest of the week. I'm having some tests, and it's not gonna be too big, but kind of difficult to come in, so. I already mentioned the Decorah delegates, and then we will host, or CDG is actually hosting at the First Street Community Building, another bypass update. Confluence will actually be here this time.
It's on the 14th, right?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, the 14th.
Is it 13?
13.
13, 13.
13, 13. That'd make me nervous. I don't have my dates right, but, so, that is all, like I said, was well attended, the last one, Confluence will be there, so you're welcome to come. The only thing I would ask, obviously, council, one, a couple of you are going to come to let me know so I can post that, because it's not a council meeting.
Yeah, but I do plan to come.
I did RSVP already.
Yeah.
So if you do, if Scott or Deb or anybody else, Eric, if you decide to go, just let me know, I just have to post that.
I'll put on disguise.
Put on your Halloween mask.
At their first meeting, I think there was 30 to 40 people there.
That's great.
Of course, Joe always offers dinner and whatever it is, so that helps.
All right, anybody else have anything?
The only other thing is, the leaf guys, they're kind of failing us again. It's been 10 days for the southwest side since they've been around, so I don't know how they, and it just started raising the last couple of days. I don't know how they, I've been told this is how they, that they're supposed to do it on certain days, and if it breaks down on a certain day, they just bypass that day, which is not the way to do it.
Have you heard, Chris, was it a mechanical issue?
Not so much mechanical issues this year, the one individual that does do that pro-op fee was actually gone, I believe, for like three or four days. They're usually pretty good at extending the dates for us if they need to.
Well, the extending the dates is the problem, is when you got your grass covered for 10 days, it kills the grass off. Eventually, they pick it up, but by that time, your grass is all dead and in his room.
You know, one of the issues that we talked about, moving to our facility, having our own composting, was the ability to keep a more regulated schedule amongst the four quadrants. I don't want to say it's all off-season, I don't want to say part of it, you know, is the city contract, they have six weeks, and you're correct, they just, it's kind of, it's not a quadrant-based system.
And have it throw wet, just makes it worse.
So anyway, they, they should probably be told to get to the southwest side.
We are, we are crossing our fingers here and there, but after the fall of 1919, at least, even if it's supplementary.
I'll just load up in my truck and just drive up.
All right, anything else?
Go vote?
Yeah.
That pump station, now, when that gets, if that gets replaced, the city won't be charged.
No, it's all right. We could actually give you...
But I mean, you know, so you have some donated projects.
Yeah, no, I'll ask Alex tomorrow.
And then going back to the wellness center, you're talking, there's gonna be 100,000 dollars put aside every year for wire replacements and...
So what I attempted to do, a year or so ago, I was told that, you know, they got this again, but they want to do like the southwest side on Thursday, and, but they have problems against...
They just skip that freaking section and go to the next one, and it's like, holy crap.
...financing dollars to basically make the bonds. They could take those lost dollars.